General checks in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Payroll liabilities for eleven twenty-two nineteen and the amount of four hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred ten dollars and seventy-seven cents. For a total of six hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
I would second that motion.
Okay, you've got a motion, you've got a second. Was there any questions to discuss about some other claims?
I did not have any.
Okay. I noted that we had more money going out towards roads. It was always good to see that. We're getting now paid for the Village Drive project, I saw. That's great. And then there was, I thought there was one more, two. Anyway, okay. Well, we've got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes. Anything else to come before the committee? Do we have me up there?
Your honor, I am present. I have nothing.
Anything else that you... Okay, Tony, anything?
I have nothing, your honor.
Okay. Megan, I guess we'll just have Carla sign for me. For the minutes.
I'll be back tomorrow afternoon. I can come in and sign.
Okay. All right, that's fine. One way or the other, just whatever works. I, we can, we can do that. But I guess what we'll do, Megan, is just send them to me via email, same as you normally would. I'll just send you an email back that says they're approved by me at least, and then Carla can just sign for me. If that works, so. All right, we'll adjourn the meeting then at six forty-eight P.M.
I now call the December third, two thousand nineteen, regular count, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P.M. The pledge of allegiance will be led in that by Councilwoman Borders and invocation by Councilman Bailey.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag.
America.
Of the United States of America.
For which it stands.
To the republic.
One nation.
Under God.
One nation.
Under God.
With liberty.
And justice.
For all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest heavenly father, thank you for all of the many blessings that we enjoy living here in this wonderful city of Riverton in the great state of Wyoming. Please bless us in all that we do here tonight. May we keep the needs of the citizens of this city in mind as we make decisions to move the city forward. Please bless all of those that serve the city, our state, and our nation, that they may be protected and kept safe, and that all the people may travel safely back home tonight and be able to serve their families. We ask all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, your honor, Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
I'm here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Corey Rota.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The chair would entertain a motion. Nope, I'm not going to do that. I declare quorum present. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
So moved. Second. There's a little bit of a delay, sorry.
Just a little bit. We appreciate it, though. We have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Mike Bailey. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Item seven, communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be, will be given the opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Good evening, and mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'll be very brief, as I know there's a lot on the agenda. I'm Chessie Lee, and I'm co-founder of the Riverton Peace Mission, and I live at three thirteen North Sixth Street East. And I'm not here to blame, place blame on anyone as to what has happened on September twenty-first when Andy Antelope was killed at Walmart, but I do want to express my concern. I am disappointed that the county attorney and law enforcement have failed to be more forthcoming about releasing the evidence for public scrutiny. This is something that an inquest could do to calm people's evidence, to calm people's concerns that an attempted cover-up is taking place. I understand concern about liability for the city, but this is not a matter that will go away with a press release from the county attorney on a Friday afternoon following Thanksgiving. Even if the facts do support that the officer acted in self-defense, there remains the question of why more was not done to prevent killing Andy. I have two requests from the council. One is to support an inquest as soon as possible so as to remove the cloud that there has been an attempted cover-up. And secondly, work with the Riverton Peace Mission and other entities as, in order to prevent this kind of event from ever happening again in our community. The Riverton Peace Mission was formed in July of this year for the purpose of promoting community harmony. The co-founder with me is Ron Howard, who has organized annual peace marches since two thousand fifteen. We seek to build bridges. Tentatively, we have scheduled a public gathering on Saturday, January nineteenth, to explore the following. First, law enforcement policies and practices regarding use of force and reduction of violence. Secondly, a critical incident response team and equitable protocols when such incidents do happen. Third, adequate mental health services. Fourth, inpatient addiction treatment available in Fremont County. And fifth, programs to end racism and to increase mutual respect and trust. We have been in touch with Rosa Salmanaka with the U.S. Department of Justice, and we are willing to work with you, the county, the state, the tribes, and other entities to address these and other appropriate matters to build bridges toward community harmony. So, thank you.
Mrs. Lee, could you give us the date again of that meeting, in January?
Yes, that's Saturday, January nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
The details haven't been worked out yet, but certainly can keep you in the loop. I believe Rosa Salmanaka will be in touch with you as well, so.
I've had, I think, three conversations with her, so. We would appreciate that. Thank you very much for
You're welcome.
coming and talking to us. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Your honor, I just wanted to mention, Chessie, that currently there's a committee that's kind of been born out of the Solutions Committee. We're looking into community treatment for drug rehab. And I'd love for you to be able to come to one of the meetings, so I'll, I'll get ahold of you and let you know when the next one is. I think it's the twelfth. I believe so, but yes, uh-huh. I believe so. I'll find out for sure. Okay, you bet.
Good evening. I'm Larry Wallace. I've spoken with you before at other council meetings. I've lived here in the Riverton area for about sixteen years, coming here from St. Louis County, where I had a house, and where five years ago, Michael Brown, a young man in St. Louis County, was killed on the streets of North County by a policeman. I come before you tonight confused and concerned, like Chessie, regarding the recent information that's been released about the killing of Andy Antelope there on the twenty-first of September. I think the articles that were Mr. LeBrun was describing, the results of the investigation and what supposedly happened, seemed to be full of holes and questions regarding the details of how this occurred. The first thing I think that's important for us to understand, and everybody in the room I know has this on their mind, is who was the officer who shot Andy? I know at some point the law will require that name, that person, to be identified. Another point is, I wonder what this officer's particular training was and how long he had worked as a police officer here in the city. Specifically, I wonder about his training with regard to handling mental health patients or patients under the influence of drugs or alcohol. Also, I wonder whether he had any previous negative contacts with Andy Antelope during his service as an officer here in the city. A week prior to the shooting, I actually saw Andy in the entrance area there of Walmart stores, sitting down on one of those electric carts, and there was an ambulance crew attempting to persuade him to get on the ambulance. So then, a week later, when he was shot, it was certainly a shocking piece of information. One of the things I wonder about, and I probably know the answer already, did the officer have a body cam? Probably not. I don't think any of the officers do. So I would suggest that might be something to consider for the future, because it clears up a lot of questions very directly. Also, I wonder whether the surveillance cameras at Walmart were turned on that day to show what was happening on the parking lot in the sidewalk area. It looks to me like there was at least six cameras on that front wall of the building. Another question that concerned me was how the officer approached Andy on that particular day, September twenty-first. Certainly, I'm thinking that Andy was well-known around town in the sense that he had run-ins with different situations and probably had been approached by law officers before. My training as a nurse working in St. Louis State Hospital forensic unit, the St. Louis County Jail, and the Wyoming State Prison was that when you approach a subject where you might suspect a conflict, you do not do it alone. So one of the big questions is, why did he not call and wait for backup in the situation? Another question comes to mind in the description by Mr. LeBrun, and I guess the state investigators regarding the bystanders, who they say were within five to ten feet of where Andy and the officer were standing. I would think it would be standard procedure, if you were approaching a person to arrest them, that you would clear the area. And most people thinking that there might be some sort of conflict would certainly not be standing five or ten feet away from a potential conflict situation. Another thing that was interesting in the articles that Mr. LeBrun was quoted in was that it said that the officer held Andy's hand or arm in order to prevent him from lashing out at other bystanders. And so one of my big questions is, does that mean then that he was holding on to Andy's hand or arm when he shot him point-blank there in the head? So along with Chessie, I would say that I agree that an inquest is needed by the coroner's office so that some of these questions can be cleared up. And like she said, the cloud of uncertainty and, and possibly negativity can be resolved in some positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hello, good evening. I'm Dustin Hedley, founder of the American Indian Movement, Wyoming chapter. I came here tonight to share the idea of getting our local law enforcement mental evaluations. We do not know what they go through on a day-to-day basis, marriage problems. I'd really feel that it's a start. That's why I came here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You know, we don't have the information that you, that you're looking for. This inquest that has gone forward, I would have to tell you that Pat LeBron and, and the people that are in charge of that have put in three hard months of work. And, and they've done their very best to get to where they're at. And so I think that the facts, as vague as you may feel they are, are, have been presented from that. And an inquest from the, from the coroner is, is his choice to do. And so we don't have any control of that as a city council. We do, and we are working really hard with a number of people to, and to establish some information between the tribes and the, and the city. And so we have that underway, and we have some good help that's helping us do that, and we appreciate that. And so we will continue to try to break that ice. And, and if anybody wants to stay afterwards and talk to me about that, I would be, I would be tickled pink to stay and, and help you any way I can. So if there's no other questions, anybody else have anything they would like to add? Any, you guys on the phone, you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I think we'll move on. Would the city clerk, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, your honor. Approval of the minutes November nineteen, two thousand nineteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes November nineteen, two thousand nineteen, executive session. Approval of the minutes December third, two thousand nineteen, finance committee meeting. And approval of the finance committee recommendations for December third, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Are there any, are there any items requiring further discussion?
Tim, do you have that?
Yes, your honor, let me, uh...
I can do it if...
Yes, let me get the minutes. Yeah, sure. Why don't you do that, Carla?
Let me open this real quick.
I got it. If you can just wait a minute, since there's a little bit of a delay that I can hear. The recommendations from the finance committee were to have claims approved to be paid in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand seventy-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. General checks in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred nine dollars and seventy-nine cents. Payroll liabilities for November twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of four hundred forty-seven, three hundred and ten, sorry, four hundred forty-seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars and seventy-seven cents. For a total of six hundred fifty-three thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing to consider the, really, public hearing to consider a real, real retail liquor license transfer from location application for Ricky D. Larson Living Trust. Would the city clerk please read, give us, give us a report?
Yes, your honor. Mayor and council, before you, before you tonight for your consideration is a retail liquor license transfer of location application submitted by Ricky D. Larson Living Trust, doing business as the Tipsy Tulip. This will be located at four oh nine East Main Street for the remainder of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty licensing year. The license is currently in non-operational status. However, with the approval of the transfer of location, the license would be placed into operational status pursuant to state statutes and Riverton municipal code. Also in attendance tonight is Mrs. Larson, should you have any questions later on. The Wyoming Liquor Division has certified the application as complete. The proper fees have been paid, and proper notice to the public has been advertised. Therefore, based on the information provided through the application process, staff recommends approval as presented.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Your honor, seeing none, I would have moved that we have closed the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilman Larson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license transfer from the location application for Ricky D. Larson Living Trust to four oh nine East Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Larson. And a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any further discussion?
Your honor, I just have one question actually. Can I ask what the Tipsy Tulip is? I look at the hours, I thought maybe it was a bar, maybe a boutique, so I was just kind of confused, and I wasn't sure if it would be okay to ask what, what is the business?
Ricky, could you give us some light on that?
Hi. So what it is actually is, we're moving our location to Jerry's Flowers and Things, and so he would like it to be named something with a flower in it. What we'll do is have a separate section in his store where you can purchase wine. So if you were having a, you know, a gift, you could go in, get a bottle of wine, get some flowers, and one-stop shop. So it's just a name because we could not use Jerry's Flowers and Things through our license.
And do you have hours?
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Our hours will be the same as Jerry's. Yeah, they'll be, will be closed at five-thirty. It's not going to be a bar or anything like that.
Does that answer everything you need?
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration for ordinance number nineteen zero twelve, first reading Vasco Edition, De-Annexation with the city. It is second reading. I got first. Appreciate that. Councilman Bailey, straighten me out. We're going to do the consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash zero one two, second reading, for the Vasco Edition De-Anix. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number nineteen dash zero one two by title only, please?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance number nineteen dash zero one two on second reading. An ordinance de-annexing the Vasco Edition and land owned by Brighter Living Trust, generally described as parcels of land in the southeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section fifteen Township, one north, range four east, Wind River Meridian, Fremont County, Wyoming.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero one two on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Borders and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The consideration of ordinance number nineteen dash zero one three. This first reading, it's second again.
Second, second reading.
Reading on motorized skateboards. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance number nineteen dash zero one three by title only?
Yes, your honor. Proposed ordinance night, number nineteen dash zero one three on second reading. An ordinance amending Title X vehicles in traffic to repeal Chapter ten point four zero, motorized skateboards at the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash zero one three on second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Schatz. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Elimination of curbside recycling. City administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the previous council meeting, the discussion about curbside recycling and the potential for elimination came, uh, was presented to council with an, with associated information and staff report. At this time, we were asked to move it, uh, move it to this meeting, so the first meeting in December, and make sure that some of our numbers were correct and to also advertise it a little bit more. To that end, we did do a little bit more research on the matter. We had been extrapolating from the one month on the credit for the curbside recycling, and we had it around 40,000. Actual numbers for the, for the last year was 42,000. So just slightly more, but we were in the ballpark. Additionally, we did a cross-section for a week of actual recycling activity and found that 14% of our overall accounts, or 18% of our residential accounts, took part in it during that cross-section time period. If we move that out and multiply it by a $5 credit, we get right in the area of the $40,000 again. So once again, not only have we scrubbed the information and made sure that it was correct for the last year, we've also done another double check on ourselves at that point, and we have found that the credit which was in question a little bit is in fact correct. Additionally, it was asked that we look into the matter a little bit more for advertising. As such, we modified what was on the agenda and discussed it in terms of elimination because that is where the discussion had been. We also did additional work to post it on Facebook. It was picked up by YO Today specifically for the, specifically for a discussion about this topic. It was on County 10 under the agenda, but I don't, I didn't find where it had a, uh, an item that was specific to it, but it was listed under the agenda. The city site posted it twice, once on 11/26 and once on 12/2. Total people reached in our metrics that we can look at are about 4,135 as of this afternoon. So we did do our best to try to get that out. It's my understanding there's also some other items written or proposed. This doesn't take into account any of the times those items were shared. So we wanted to make sure that you understand, we did do our best to try to get it out there and provide that information. You have before you the same general staff report as was provided previously with the same general information. The, with the exception of what I have just presented to you verbally and the, and the additional work. At this point, we are comfortable with the numbers that we have presented to you, that they are correct. With that, we would have, stand for any additional questions that you have on the matter and discussion.
The chair would entertain a motion too, and then I'm three dots into the subject. So what we'd like to do is, we don't have a public hearing here, but we, we want everybody that has a comment, we'd like to hear from you. So if you would come up and give us a comment, if you have one on recycling, if somebody's already stated your point, I don't think you need to readdress it, but if not, we'd like to, we'd like to hear what the public has to say. And once again, just for the television audience, if you could approach the podium and, and state your name. So that we can keep track of you, we'd like that.
Well, Councilmembers and Mayor, I guess I'll go first then.
Thanks, Martin.
My name is Martin Canam, and I do have a few comments about recycling, strictly because, again, I've got some numbers that Mr. Butterfield was kind enough to provide, and I think they were the same ones that were in your initial, uh, report you got from staff. You know, the, some of the costs that were in the Ranger and bounced around was that it's costing the city like 140, 150,000 dollars a year to run the recycling program. And I think if you take a look at the numbers, it's, it's not anywhere near that. You can look at the, the numbers that I, that I've kinda got from Mr. Butterfield and my rationale as to why I don't think those things are gonna really cost the city. Personnel, for example, was given as 119,000. Well, that was given for two people, where there's only one individual actually doing recycling. That one individual is probably gonna be retained in a different position and down at public work, so, so that's no savings. Uh, equipment is the same way. I mean, the city already owns the pickup truck. So you're gonna continue to drive that pickup truck and curve gas and oil and maintenance on it, uh, just like you would if it's running the recycling route. So I don't see any savings there. The only savings that, again, were brought up would be the recycling rebates. Numbers I used, Mr. Butterfield at that time thought it was around 1,000 people, so I used that. That would be 60,000 a year. But again, you have to balance that against the savings of that recyclables not going across into the landfill. And I think that was the original purpose of the recycling program, to keep those recyclables out of the landfill and extend that life. If you look at what the savings have been of not going, of putting those recyclables across, it's only been in the last two years that the recycling program hasn't come close to either paying for itself or breaking even. So I guess my two comments or questions about the recycling program is, why was the sudden drop in the last two years? Are recyclables going across the scale being measured in a different way that affects that? Or has there been such a drastic drop in the number of people that are recycling? I mean, we went from in fiscal year 2017 of, of savings of a 62,000, and that dropped drastically in 2018 down to 16. So I guess my question to the city would be, have they done any research to figure out what caused that hu, that big drop? Also, I think if the city is looking for savings and maybe a way to pay for the recycling program is the water loss that was reported, again, in the Ranger. It was reported that the city loses 33% of its water, and that that amounts to almost $540,000 a year. And that's really not a cost to the city because the city in, has increased the water rates to the residents to pay for that. So that cost is really covered. But if my math is close, each percent lost is over $16,000. So if the city would only recover less than 5% of that water loss, they'd, they'd have the recycling program paid for over and above what it was, what it's costing the city to run. So again, I think if you're looking for savings, I, I think the city should turn its focus to that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Sarah Weiner, and I work at the CES for recycling. And I'd be like to have a curbside still going. And my name, some of my neighbors want, wants it still going too. And if it doesn't, um, we will, I might lose my job. And if we don't work down there at the dump, all the bins will be a mess. And, you know, we mostly go down at work, we go across the fence, and we sort out the, um, number ones, number twos, the paper and cardboard. It's, it's always a mess down there. And we will, we need to have this job still. And most of my neighbors want the curbside still gonna go around the, around the houses. And if, if it doesn't, most of the old people will, will not like to go down there and go down to the dump every day in the cold and very hot. So I just wanna keep it going if, if it's possible for us to work down there. So that's my opinion for tonight.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
My name is Sean Griffin. I'm the CEO of Community Entry Services. And just real quickly, um, I think sometimes the, the success of a program can't be measured in dollar and cents all the time. I really truly believe that. Running a nonprofit, I, I see both sides of it. I mean, we have to be a business, we have to run and make money. We can't lose money. So I understand the fiscal impact, and I've said that before at other ones. But I've been involved directly with it since probably 1991. And, and I'm coming from a biased point of view, and I think you all know that. My whole goal in my life is to help advocate and create jobs and a good life for people with disabilities in Fremont and Teton County. And CES has done a, a good job at that, I believe. And, and we've done that, we've taken some chances now and then. And sometimes, I mean, you guys have lost money on this endeavor, I know the county has. CES has lost money for 20 years on, on the recycling program, but our priorities are maybe a little bit different, and, and that's a disclaimer, I know that. But I would be remiss if I didn't get up here and say there's a lot of other benefits to individual lives that this recycling program has touched. I've seen people that had no work skills whatsoever. I've seen people come out of our state institution. And when I say people, I mean the tunes of probably 50 to 100 people who worked in our recycling program over the years and built skills that helped them move out into communities and move to their hometowns throughout the state of Wyoming. And so I just wanted to say that I know there's a dollar and cents issue here, I understand that fully. I'm just coming from it from a different aspect, as I've seen it really touch the lives of people. And I've, I've kinda, I was gonna be a lawyer in my early days, and I'm glad I didn't. No offense to you, Councilman Hancock, but I'm glad I do what I...
I'm glad you did.
I lucked, I lucked into this job when I did, and I, I gotta advocate for jobs for people with disabilities, and that's why I'm here. So thank you.
Thanks, Sean. We appreciate that.
Your Honor, I know this is a, maybe not the best time to ask, but Sean, if, if we did not do the pickup anymore, um, would CES still be involved in sorting recyclables that are brought to the, um, to the transfer station with the county?
I, I know in Lander we will because it's set up differently. In Riverton, I don't think I can answer that question right now, Councilman Hancock. We would have to weigh it. We'd certainly have to weigh it. Our intention would still be to do the commercial cardboard routes at this time. One of the fears that was brought up a little bit earlier was the possibility, and I think Sarah touched on a little bit, without the curbside, um, we think that some of the, the quantity is gonna go down at the bail station. And I know we can, people can still recycle down at the bail station, that'll still be an option. The fear is that we don't have enough people using that with the decrease, that eventually that might not be worth keeping open either. And, and that's something we'd have to have a discussion between CES and the Solid Waste District as we move forward and, and possibly the city as well. And don't get me wrong, I, I appreciate all the help the city's done. I mean, they really have helped us. Videl does a wonderful job, he's got a hard job, he's been doing it for years. The city has committed to this project, and so, you know, please don't take what I'm saying as wrong. We wanna still work cooperatively with everyone.
Councilman Bailey?
Sean, could you, you mentioned Lander does it different than we do, so what does Lander do?
Lander does what happened if the curbside went away. People have to bring their recyclables out to the, to the landfill out there. And that's just how that's been structured since the beginning, and that's kinda been an anomaly, and everybody will say that. It makes Riverton stand in my mind a little bit above Lander when it comes to recycling, which, which would surprise you with the Knowles program over there, the Outdoor Council, um, a lot of those programs that are out there. But recycling is, they, they, they take it out. They don't have the curbside because they don't have curbside trash pickup either done by the city in Lander. So there's, there's some different things going on there, Mike.
Okay.
I mean, Councilman Bailey?
That's fine.
Any other questions for Mr. Griffin?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, Your Honor, thanks.
Andy?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Andy Frye, I'm with the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District. Wanted to talk, just to offer some comments in lieu of tonight's conversation. A community that operates their own curbside garbage collection program in Wyoming demonstrates their interest in providing a high level of service to their community. That is a service that is not very common in Wyoming, typically in communities that value providing their current and potential residents and businesses with services that are expected. Curbside recycling is the same. These services are just a few considered by potential homeowners and/or potential new or relocating businesses. Other services that are considered include fire, emergency service, sewer, parks and recreation, and schools. Owning and operating a curbside recycling program is something that the city of Riverton should be proud of. It's, it's fairly unique in Wyoming, it, it's fairly progressive. Much of the council discussions have been around a few specific concerns, three that come to my mind. Financial impact and losses. Whether government should provide a service that could otherwise be dictated by markets and private industry. And operational efficiencies. With regards to financial impacts and losses, it's been stated that the curbside recycling program has been viewed as a cost center. A cost center that does not pay for itself through diverting enough tonnage and avoided disposal fees to cover the operational expenses. It remains unclear to me why this program is being required to pay for itself, somewhat singled out. Or how this program is any different than parks and recreation, like pass, the tree or arbor program, flowers and plants along the sidewalks, gate park, water park, or the airport, all of which are subsidized in different ways. One consideration is what the loss would be to miss out on one or more new or relocating businesses or homeowners that review the services provided by the city only to see that waste diversion is not a priority for the community. Another consideration directly linked to this decision is the unintended consequence impacting Community Entry Services. CES, a nonprofit advocacy and service organization dedicated to empower people with disabilities, an organization that develops a setting where their clients become contributing members to their community. This is the group that does the primary workload associated with unloading, cleaning, sorting, and transferring the city's recycling materials. This is the group that will potentially see their employment reduced with the discontinuation of the curbside recycling program. This will potentially impact two full-time CES staff members and five CES clients. This will increase unemployment, but also remove from the working society clients that will inevitably be forced to become wards of the state where taxpayers are funding their care requirements. If this program is discontinued at some point in the future, the city will undoubtedly pursue recreating the program. It's just the way that things are. At that time, the cost associated with developing the program will be exponentially higher than the cost of maintaining the current program. Recreation of this program in the future will include, will not include a CES component. When this goes away, this will go away. Meaning the city will require additional equipment and staff to unload, clean and sort, and transfer the materials. Termination now will likely cost the city substantially down the road. Number two, whether government should provide a service that could otherwise be dictated by markets and private industry. There are many social services provided by various governments, including cities, that provide a level of improved life that are not operated by private industry simply because the value of the program is not financial. Curbside recycling is an example of this. CES's services are another. When asked about my personal opinion of recycling, my response is always the same. Recycling is only beneficial when it is beneficial to the environment. Recycling all materials in all locations is not, in fact, always beneficial to the environment. Programs intended to provide a service intended to benefit the environment are not always lucrative. Recycling the commodities currently managed through the district have been determined to be environmentally beneficial, yet not financially lucrative. The district does not make a profit from their recycling program. Operational efficiencies, I, I think of course, number one, uh, I'm sure we heard about it plenty at the last council meeting and a little bit at the beginning of this, removal of the recycling credit for participation. That, in, in my mind, should certainly be considered for removal. With the investment into curbside recycling program already in place, it would seem logical that the first step or second step associated with improved efficiencies would be, first off, to streamline the program. There was discussion last month to consider moving away from weekly collection and consider bi-weekly or monthly, I think there's alternatives that exist. Promote growth and awareness, awareness to the program, advertise it, get people involved. involved. Improve participation, increase tonnages, and see if the program cannot pay a larger portion of the operational expenses. I would like to just go on the record with one more comment, and that is that the Solid Waste District supports recycling in Fremont County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
Andy, I guess, to what extent is the Solid Waste District willing to support this? Would the Solid Waste District help out with some of this financially? I know that the Solid Waste District isn't necessarily making a lot of money on it either. But, I mean, I may be putting you on the spot a little bit with this, but that is, that is kind of one of my thoughts, is it seems like if the Solid Waste District is getting something out of it, maybe they could help out with it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hancock. I guess, first and foremost, I think it's probably worth stating that the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District is heavily invested in recycling already in Fremont County. All materials collected and diverted by the city are then handed off, first to CES, and then, second, to the district. In our last full-scale review of our recycling program, the Solid Waste District has financial losses of over $500,000 per year into the recycling program. As I've understood it tonight and last month, I think the city is seeing losses of in or around $100,000. I'm not quite certain what additional financial support the city might feel would be beneficial, but that may be a discussion we can have at a future board meeting.
Does that, Councilman Hancock, does that help?
I guess it does. I mean, the other thing I would bring up, I had an opportunity to get ahold of, what was it, Intermountain Paper. They're the ones, not Intermountain Paper, but anyway, they, they're the ones that actually get the recycling. I had some discussions with other council members about what happens to the recycling once it's getting picked up. I had a good discussion with them, and they said, well, number one, the quality of the recycling that they're getting from Riverton, Wyoming is far above and beyond what they get from other communities. Because first, it's being sorted at the consumer level, and then it's going to CES where it's getting sorted again there. And they said they actually wish that every other community was giving them the quality that they are getting from our community. But one of the discussions that we had had was, you know, what's actually happening to this? Is there a chance that this is getting shipped overseas or something like that, such that it actually has more danger of getting into the ocean or whatnot? It might not be a bad idea, Andy, if you could address that, just because I don't want to go too far into this. But as I understand it, once they get it, they are actually making sure that it is, for the most part, staying in Utah, except for the cardboard, which is going up to Oregon. Could you tell us a little bit about that, or do you know about that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hancock, I can talk as much as I'm capable of about this. So all of the, not all of the commodities that are collected and managed by the Solid Waste District, in fact, go through Interwest Paper. They receive our mixed paper, our corrugated cardboard and plastics. Our tin and aluminum are baled and stockpiled on-site and then competitively bid out. And at times, they have purchased the material as a high bidder. With that being said, prior to the full-scale environmental changes implemented by China, much of the district's plastics were being shipped overseas, such as, along the same lines as what 90-plus percent of the world was doing. Since that time, there's, there's been a significant change within the industry. Much more of the products are being retained domestically and being processed down to a marketable level. Plastics, however, for example, for example, are actually being pelletized, pelletized within the continental United States and then shipped elsewhere for use. Our mixed paper has been going to Salt Lake since, I actually don't even know, I've been here for eight years, and it's been going there since prior to that. There's been a insulating company that has been a longstanding buyer of our mixed paper. It meets their needs. We've been able to maintain a low enough contamination level that they're very satisfied and continue to purchase it. Like you had stated, our corrugated cardboard typically goes to mills along the West Coast. We've shipped to Oregon, Washington, and California at different times. But to our knowledge, currently, all products are staying within the continental United States.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor and Council, I'm Dawn Welheim, as most of you know. I just wanted to say, I was one of the original members of the Riverton Recycle Group that brought the curbside into Riverton. We worked with Bill Urbikite at the time to develop the program and bring it into Riverton. It was a desire of the committee. That was basically an offshoot off of the Lander Recycling Group, whereas, like has previously been stated, Lander's city does not do their own trash pickup. They have contractors that come in and do that. So the way their program developed with recycling is they picked locations, neighborhood locations, and did the recycling, and then their volunteer members would then take it up. It eventually dissolved, just too much commitment. But over here, because the city of Riverton actually offered sanitation services, they looked at, the group looked at the curbside as a offshoot, as a, you know, just another service to offer the citizens that would differ and sent us apart from Lander. And like I said, I was part of the original one. I would hate to see it go, I guess, just because it's still dear to my heart. I don't, I don't, I'm not in it for doing the $5. I'll pay $5 or more to do it. I actually also, at the time, I was working at Inberg Miller, which, as you know, I'm back there. I actually set up this Inberg Miller Recycling Center and was awarded with the Wyoming Solid Waste and Recycling Association. Was awarded an award for setting that up, just because it was progressive for Wyoming and for Riverton. At that time, Riverton and Fremont County wasn't really looked at that well, even though CES has been around a long time. They were kind of just doing the aluminum and metal. So, anyway, just wanted to give you that little background.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Marilyn Wheeler. I'm a staffer at CES. I've been doing the recycling part for 19 years. I work with the people. Do a lot of hard work and try to keep it as clean as possible. And it's good for the people, you know, to be out with the community, and it teaches them to work, gives them responsibility. We enjoy it. We have school kids that have done tours to come in, and they're excited to go home and tell mom and dad, you know, what's recyclable. And we was also Recycler of the Year a few years ago, so.
Fabulous. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Wyatt Redcloud. Right now, I'm just going to say that, right now, we have one Mother Earth, and right now, we have to cherish her. She gives us all our resources. She never asks us for anything else from us. And right now, the cost shouldn't matter of, like, taking care of her. It's just like, what foundation do you want to leave for your grandchildren or your kids? It's just like, what gener-, or like, what do you want to leave for your generations to come? It shouldn't matter what cost should come. I mean, right now, I mean, like, I'm Native American that cares for my Mother Earth. I care for her so much. Like, it shouldn't matter to you guys, too, because I have so much passion for her. She doesn't really ask for anything. It should matter to you guys, too, because we only have one Mother Earth. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm Larry Wallace, and I just want to make a brief comment regarding the fact that I have participated in the curbside recycling program here in the city. And certainly, I find it as a convenience to sort of whittle down my throwaway in my garbage. We all know that we're defined as a culture that lives in a throwaway society, and I think it's important to teach our children that everything doesn't have to go in the garbage, that some things can be reused in different ways to benefit the local community and the world. And my memory of my dad working as a steelworker back in Illinois was that all that scrap metal was going into the furnace to make new cars and new refrigerators, and this, that, and whatever. So from a very early age, I saw that in my own experience. I've recycled in three different states, in Illinois, Missouri, and here in Wyoming. And I think it really is an opportunity for children to learn, in a very convenient way, in their own home situation, separating a few of the items from the garbage that can be put out to the curb and recycled in a positive way. But I also agree with the previous comment that some people don't make it or cannot make it down to the collection center there off Smith Road, which is also a very good opportunity, but some people just don't have the transportation or the strength to carry their items down there. So in that, in those situations, curbside recycling is a great benefit and convenience.
Thank you, Larry.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I am Mark Moxley. I'm the chairman of the Fremont County Solid Waste Board. I think Andy Frye covered most of our considerations in this matter. We, we support recycling, and I think Riverton should be proud of having curbside recycling. We don't have that in Lander. I wish we did. There are only very few communities in Wyoming that have curbside recycling, and I think that is a point of pride for your city. Our board has talked about recycling for a long time. We don't make money on recycling. It costs us money, as you heard from Mr. Frye, on the order of half a million dollars a year. But frankly, the, the board feels that recycling is something that we should do. It's the right thing to do. I would offer, if the city of Riverton wishes to talk with the board and see if there are economies of scale, or if we can help out, we'd be glad to visit with you folks about that. The biggest concern that we have as a board is how this might impact CES. CES has been our partner for many, many years. They're a good partner. They do good work. In this day and age, it's really important that our recycled commodities be clean and free of contamination as much as possible. And the folks at CES really do that job for us, to help keep our product clean. If our, if our recyclables are not clean, they are trash, and they'll go in the landfill. They're not worth anything. So we are, we are very concerned as to how this might affect CES. And I'll just close with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else?
I'm Ray Winkle. Hope I don't forget everything I was going to say. Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to say that, I think, Mike, you brought this up, fiscal responsibility. Well, that is important. It's important to the city. It's important to everybody. However, I, I think we should be very proud of our recyclable program here, especially the curbside. I mean, that, that is something that's not done in other places. It offers a lot of advantages to citizens. Some people just can't drive to get rid of their recyclables. I, I think it probably never was intended to be, or to make money, and it probably never will. But there's some other comments that were made earlier, and I'll have to agree with those. First of all, I think you ought to have an audit of all your department heads, you know, maybe, and maybe you've done that, I don't know, to see where money is going. There's some, could be some cost savings there. And secondly, I don't, I think you'd be surprised if you did get rid of the $5 reimbursement charge for people who take care, or take part of the recyclable program now. I would think that a lot of these people will recycle anyway. I think it's important to a lot of people. It's not only the right thing to do. I think it's the responsible thing to do. And I appreciate the time, and I really hope you don't get rid of this program. I think it's very important to the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to address us? Seeing none, what we'll do now, usually, we have a, a public hearing on a first reading. We don't have a, we don't have a motion to read. So I do appreciate your comments, and I, I appreciate that, the passion that's there. And, and we'll try to answer a few of those questions as we go along. And we'll go from now into discussion with the, the council, of what the council understands about recycling, and try to answer some of the questions that are posed. Any other, anybody have any questions?
Your Honor, I would just like to say that I really appreciate all the comments. I think it's really important, from my standpoint, I don't recycle for $5. I recycle for several reasons. One, it cuts down on my trash. I take my trash out once or twice a week instead of every day. And also, we're taking care of the earth. And I think the, the more we can do that, the better off we are. And we're helping people be employed. I'm a huge advocate for CES. I think anyone that knows me knows that. And I would just like to see us do whatever we can to try to keep the program.
Rebecca?
Your Honor, I am too, as part of continuing the curbside recycling within the city. I did throwback the idea, if maybe a third party could do this for the community, but I think that keeping it within the city maintains the accountability where we won't be like Lander when they said, years down the road, they, too much work, they don't want to do it. So I think maintaining it within the city is probably a good idea. However, I do think, just like the gentleman that came to speak to us two months back, on the utility rates, if we're going to provide a service, we should be charging for those services as a, as a city. I think that by charging for those services as well, especially if we do it across the board, charging them like most communities do, I, from polling other communities, not just in Wyoming, but in other states like North Dakota, they charge a flat rate for everybody, whether you want to sign up for it or not. It's an extra $5 on top of your bill. And so if we, and then, I think, too, if we start charging people for it, they're going to start using going to start using it. You're going to pay for what you're, you're going to use what you're paying for. So if you're being charged $5 across the board, I'll tell you, I'll start recycling. I don't recycle currently, just because I just don't. But if I know that I'm paying for it, I'm, I'm definitely going to do it, because I'm going to get what I pay for. I think also, if we, if we work on advertising it more as well, I know that I'm pretty in the know, I, I like to think, on things within the community. But I honestly, before this discussion was had, I didn't realize that we even had the opportunity to get this curbside recycling and also get it off my bill. So I think more advertising via social media, Ranger, that type of thing, would also increase participation, which I was also finding out after doing my research, that that, the liner for the landfill, I think, was $4.5 million to replace. Is that correct, Andy? Does that sound about right?
Yes.
And so by, by recycling, that will extend the life of that landfill significantly, tremendously. Like, you can't even calculate how much life that will extend the landfill. So again, I would make a motion to continue with curbside recycling within the city and charge a fee, a flat fee. That's my motion.
Let's let everybody else have their discussion, and then we'll come back to your motion. Anybody else? Councilman Bailey?
Um, thank you. Again, and I approached this from, I guess, purely a fiscal standpoint. You know, the city of Riverton this year had to face substantial reductions in our revenues, as the whole state of Wyoming has seen. We had to cut our budget on the things that we need to operate the city to a fairly substantial amount. I mean, larger than we're talking about here. And, and so I looked at this from really just a financial aspect, okay? If we're spending $100,000 collecting recyclables when we could all take them down to the baling station ourselves, that's maybe something that the city didn't need to do for us, okay? I, again, am a huge supporter of CES, and they do some amazing work, and they really, again, they save us a lot of money with the services they provide compared to the alternatives for some of those citizens and what they would have to go through if we didn't have CES. So I am a huge supporter. You know, I do recycle. Their truck comes and picks up a bunch of cardboard from me every week or two, and I think that's awesome, okay? I'm also a believer in conservation over and above recycling, which means we don't use the material, so we don't have to throw it away, so we don't have to worry about it filling up the landfill. And we've done a lot, again, in my business, to cut down the amount of trash that we generate. And I think that's really what we all want to try to do, and that's what I hear when people talk about recycling. We're talking about saving the landfill, not putting it in the ground. And the easiest way to do that is not generate the trash to start with. And so I think we need to focus on that, too. But we can't, as the city of Riverton, control that very well. So again, I'm purely looking at this as a fiscal issue that we are spending, again, somewhere in the tune of $100,000, and that's plus or minus, depending on what, you know, you look at. But that's real money, okay? We had to postpone buying needed police vehicles. We had to postpone buying a mower for the Parks and Recreation Department. We had to, you know, we had less city employees than we would have liked because we didn't have the budget to do that. So we, as citizens, have to look and make choices and go, you know, do we want to have cop cars that run, or do we want to spend $100,000 on recycling? So I mean, we have to make those choices. That's our job. You know, we've been elected to take care of the financial responsibilities of the city of Riverton, and that's what we're trying to look at doing. So we're not doing this because we don't like recycling. We're not doing this because, you know, we, we don't like CES, or we don't like whatever. So, you know, this is a, we have had a lot of tough financial decisions to make, and I think this is just one more of them. And, you know, I would encourage people to recycle, but in my opinion, I think we ought to haul it down to the baling station, just like Lander and most of the other cities in Riverton do. Well, I don't think, or in Wyoming do. You know, I don't think it necessarily should be totally the responsibility of City of Riverton. And if we do continue to do recycling, I would agree with Rebecca that we have to charge something for that. So, you know, our new sanitation fees that are actually going down because the sanitation department, we, we had that guy come in and analyze our costs, and he recommended rates, and they actually are lowering. But if we keep recycling pickup, we're going to have to relook at that with either some kind of a fee or, or something, because the city of Riverton doesn't have any money. We get all our money from the citizens of Riverton. And so we have to do our best to allocate that appropriately and do the best we can and provide the services that we need to with that money that we're given by the citizens through the fees that they pay us to do those jobs. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Kyle?
Your Honor, I, I feel that the worst thing there is is a plastic bottle in a landfill in Riverton, Lander, Dewboys, Shoshone, or anywhere else. And I have some real thoughts about costs, but wise usage of money is always. And so I feel that we should, it's a service, and if people want to recycle, I feel that, I'm sorry, Rebecca doesn't recycle. I know she's an advocate of picking up trash, but I know that if she's paying for recycling, she'll utilize it. And a lot of people are that way. If it's free, you don't utilize it. But if you're going to pay for it anyway, anyway, then you can take that extra whatever that you value that at. And so I feel that we should charge for that service. I know that we're not going to really make a big difference on saving the landfills. I mean, it was legislated that the landfill in Lander was going to be capped at 2024. That was it. Miraculously, we had a new president, and that jumped to 2038. Nothing changed. Nothing changed, except we had a different party involved. But that's not the point. The point is, do you want to put that type of substance in the ground that doesn't decay? I guarantee, in 50 years, somebody's going to be out there going, we need to dig that up and get rid of it and collect it somewhere else. So, you know, we just need to be a little more proactive. And I realize what Mike is saying is absolutely, because I've sat through the same budgetary meetings, but we just need to charge more for collecting and recycling. Recycling is a service. It's not a free service. We don't give away mon- water, nor do we give away anything else. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. Corey or Tim, do you have any comments for us?
Your Honor, I think I just wanted some clarification from Rebecca. Were you saying you were thinking that everybody should pay $5, whether they use the recycling or not? Was that your proposal?
Correct.
I just wanted to know, I mean, when he went through and put up the rates, the proposed rate was just 50 cents per person, and it looked like that was just for recycling.
Forty cents.
And I just, and you're thinking, though, of the $5, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll tell you, you know, I've thought a lot about this. Like, I already said that I, I reached out to Bo at, um, I, my note isn't very clear, but I, I reached out to him to talk about this, and, and they get all of our cardboard at Interwest Paper. And that all is getting recycled, sent up to Oregon. It goes to Utah, and then it's heading up to Oregon. He was saying the plastics that he get, he specifically mentioned the number two ones are all recycled domestically, which made me feel better, considering some of the conversations I've had with folks and just, you know, different things that I've read about, basically, when you're looking at recycling, it's like, is this really helping the planet if we're shipping it to another country, where frankly, if we were to bury it in the ground here, there's less of a chance of that plastic reaching the ocean? I would put the chance for that at about zero than if we were to ship it, then there's a chance it might, you know, especially if it's going to go overseas. So, you know, I, I looked into this a lot, and I spoke to him, and it made a big difference to me that at least for the cardboard and the plastics that they get, that that is staying domestically. Other than that, the other, and I'm sorry, I, I came down with a cold while I was here, but in case you can't tell from how my voice sounds, the other thing is, you know, when we were talking about savings here, I, I don't know that this is really going to equal as much savings as is being advertised. When we spoke to Kyle about this, he was saying he'd want to actually keep the position that recycling really is done by, that, that basically, the position with the full-time recycling position. And I, I don't see that this is going to represent the savings that it is on paper, which I think kind of goes to what Mr. Canaan was saying. My thought would be, I, I support Rebecca's idea. I think having the people that pay it, use it. And, and I think also, you know, if we're going to be tightening our belts, let's do it twice a month. I, I, I mean, I don't think it really needs to be something that we're doing every single week. People can hold on to their recycling a little longer, or they can take it in on their own if they want it earlier than that. So, so I support Rebecca's motion, but I would even also add that we perhaps move to just a twice-a-month pickup rather than every week. Thank you.
Thank you. Corey?
Uh, yes, sir. So I basically just want to repeat what a couple have said already. I, I think if we add a charge for it, they're more apt to use it. And then you're eliminating, I believe, I looked at some numbers, but I was only assuming about 500 people recycling, and I came up with the number of about $30,000 a year, even if you just stopped giving a credit. So if you added $5 on top of it, you're adding 30,000 the other way. That's facing it off of 500 people a month at $5 for a whole year. So I, I think it is a service. I think it's fair that, you know, we are providing it. I don't want to lose it. I'd hate to see it go, excuse me, go as well. So I, I would support that as well, that we keep it going, we just add a fee for the service.
Thank you. A couple of things have been mentioned that I would like to, to address. It's interesting, on, on one hand, that there's very few cities in Riverton that are offering recycling, and yet it's something that we need to continue to do. Strikes me as an interesting, perplexing thing. We had to cut almost a million dollars from the budget last year. And so, you know, when we go around to try to pick up those dollars, this, this is what drives this conversation. It's not that we don't love Mother Earth, or we don't care about where our recyclings end up. We certainly, there isn't anyone here that doesn't care about CES. We do everything we can do for CES. And yet, in the same conversation, the, the conversation is that Lander's recycling's doing just fine, and it's, it's really knocking it out of the park today. And yet, they're delivering their own recyclables to, to the center. And I've had a number of people talk to me about, you know, I've missed the recycle date four times, and what am I going to do with all these cans I got in my garage? Now, it's not the city's fault that they don't get it out on the curb on the right day. Laramie, Mrs. Bailey brought me today, an article that Laramie does recycle, and they do it a little bit different. They use the same size cans, and they pick up Monday, Tuesday, not Wednesday. They pick up Thursday and Friday trash. But on Wednesday, they pick up recyclables with the same container, with the same equipment, and, and saves some of the cost. So it's, it's not that we would have to just do away with this. But I think some of the comments are kind of over the top, because we have, we have a lot of people that this is going to affect. When we go back and put $5 on everybody's bill, there's going to be more people in the room. And, and so now we're, we've gone, for how long have we done recycling?
Your Honor, we have, our current numbers are back through 11.
Through 11?
And it's been before that.
And I was here when, when we decided that this was a great idea. And so it's, it's not that, that I don't think it's a good idea. The cost of, the cost of landfills is expensive, but I do not think, we, we are saving 100 and, 156.7 tons in '19, and we were clear up to, in '14, we were putting 920.6 tons in landfill. So, Andy, maybe this catches you off guard, but how long are, if we're, if we put in 156 tons, how long, how many years do we actually really save our landfill?
Mr. Mayor, it would be an absolute guess if I were to respond to that.
Well, but you've been guessing all night long.
Calculated responses are slightly different than guesses. Mr. Mayor, the district receives around 35,000 tons annually.
35,000 tons? And I, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I think lots of times, we make it, we make these decisions emotionally instead of practically. And, and one nice thing about putting garbage in the landfill and, and putting dirt over the top, we know where it's at. Even if the government changes 40 years from now, and they want this stuff dug up, we know where it's at. And so Councilman Hancock's comment about, we don't know if it makes it to the ocean or where it's at, somewhat is perplexing. And so we, it's been supposed, it's been suggested that maybe our department heads aren't doing their job. And I would want to put that subject to bed. We have great department heads, and they're doing really good work. Andy, thank you for your.
Thank you.
For your, your, your latest guess, okay?
Your Honor?
Yeah. Councilman Bailey?
I just calculated out, it's, that's point 4% that we would affect the landfill.
And so we're not saving years and years and years of landfill space. And I, I can see heads nodding that we're correct back there. We are saving, and that's important. It's important to, to all of these comments, to learn to conserve, are important. The real problem that we run up against is that our department heads are doing their absolute best. They don't want to lose any employee. So when we say, hey, we're going to, we're going to cut a department, everybody starts scrambling to where they can put those individuals, and, and we don't want to lose those individuals. And so it makes it difficult. I don't think Martin's numbers are, I wish Martin was still here. I'd like to address some of those. Just because we lose water that we can't retain doesn't make it save us money on any other product, project. We're not losing water, what the Ranger puts on the front page, that we're losing 34% of water. We're not doing that on purpose. We do that because our pipes are old and our infrastructure has problems. And so we're trying to create a fix to that problem also. If nobody else in the state is doing it, it's a good indication to me that maybe it isn't that savings to, to them. The other thing that I, I really don't like, you know... The other thing that I, I really don't like, it's been mentioned and, um, when we, when we put a cost across the board on all the citizens of $5, we only have 600 and last, we did run a count of pickup and we have 642 individuals that are, that are recycling. That's a 14% of the, of the population of Riverton. Um, overall, including, including, um, commercial pickup, including commercial pickup and 18% of residential customers. So now we're going to spear a, a larger group and we are going to generate more money. So, you know, I'm, I'm all right with that if that's the answer, if that's what you're proposing. The tough part is if we just keep it on the recyclers, if we're going to generate the money to pay for recycling, Tony helped me with that a little bit, uh, just before the meeting, we would have to, we would have to assume, at least I would assume, that if we, if we quit giving the credit and started to charge, there would be some people that would choose not to participate. So we'd have some type of reduction in users. So even if we, if we moved that up to a $5 fee and, and gave some reduction in users, um, we wouldn't generate the $30,000 that Councilman Rotas referring to. And if you, if you really get it down to numbers, we'd have to almost double those users sanitation fee, the 30 bucks. Now, I'm all right with that if you want to do that, but I, I think just putting a Band-Aid on it at $5 doesn't, doesn't address that either. And so I'm, I'm all for the city services. I, I love the opportunity to have CES involved. The facility is nice. Um, I, so we, we get all the information out. I've had one conversation with, uh, Mrs. Bailey, had one conversation with the lady on the phone and Martin Canaan has called me and I told Martin when the meeting was tonight. Those are the three conversations that I've had with citizens. So when I start to put this in perspective, the hundred plus thousand dollars that we save, that's what we spent on Riverton Rec this last year. That's what we gave Riverton Rec, the youth of Riverton. It's real substantially the same. And so I think there's better ways to target those back to individuals in Riverton than just raising the funds. It seems like to me every time government meets, we just look for another cash flow. And so I would, I, for all of those subjects, I, I just, you know, like Councilman Bailey said, we sit here and we try to find the dollars that we need to run government. And, uh, and it's not easy to do, and yet we want to serve the people. And so, um, we've had, I think there's a few more people in the audience tonight that spoke than, than my calculations are, and I appreciate every one of you coming. And, and I think we've got some good ideas. We have to move forward here with our sanitation fees to, to fix that tonight. So, um, we're, we're going to have to do something with that. We can't just let this hang. And so staff, have anything to throw, any hanger in age you want to throw in the group?
Your Honor, I, I would like to bring up something. I, I wasn't sure as a point of order, but, um, the proposed sanitation fee resolutions do include recycle rates. It would be the will of the council to either approve it or, or approve it with amendments to the recycle rates. But, um, the proposed rates do indicate that if a person or a home citizen were to participate in the curbside, curbside recycling program, that their rate would be higher than a normal sanitation rate. The proposed rate would indicate that a regular 90 gallon, uh, user, they would see a decline in their garbage bill each month by $2.56. If they chose to recycle, they would see an increase in their garbage bill of $3.70 per month. For the 45 gallon container users, they would see an increase, um, to their regular bill. So it would be a non-recycle customer of 53 cents. And if they chose to recycle, they would see an increase of $4.69 on their bill. So I thought that that was important to bring up as you're deciding flat fees or other adjusted rates, different things like that, that that would be the recommendation that we would be making on the next item on the agenda.
And I think for, for now, we need to, uh, help me with this just a little bit, staff. We need to, um, make it so that we have the sanitation rates where they need to be. And so do we need a motion, Tony, to get there?
Um, Your Honor, at this point, if you want to make any changes, let me back up to the conversation we're having right now. If we want to make any changes to curbside recycling, whether, um, that's something we can bring, we can look at and bring back in terms of pickups and the like, because it doesn't really change the actual cost center that much, even changing the number of pickups and we, it, it doesn't change it that much. However, I think the one thing that is probably appropriate for the next conversation, no matter what, is a, is a removal of the, if nothing else, a removal of the credit.
I think we can do that tonight, can't we?
I believe you can do that tonight. And I, and I would defer to Mia on this one because she understands these numbers much better than anybody else, I think. Um, whether or not we adopt the rest of the rates is probably a discussion, a, a, a more appropriate discussion, because right now you have, you could do a reduction. And if I understood Mia correctly, Mia, correct me if I'm wrong here, we would have, if I heard that right, based on what we have right now, we, anybody who is, would see a slight increase, others would see a decrease. But as you pointed out, that is, you're applying it to a limited number of individuals. So you would have the expectation or the assumption that there would be a reduction in that, uh, usage, in that, in that, uh, in that process, because there's an additional cost. It might be minor, it might be major, we, that would be a guesstimate. So if, if nothing else, I think just getting back to the point, if we want to talk a little bit more about what we set those rates at in terms of applying an across-the-board rate increase and that promotes, or that is, as was suggested, promotes recycling, then that might need to be pushed off a little bit. Removal of the recycling credit would be appropriate, just because I think at this point, we know that that's a, that, that's, uh, that's not only a recommendation, but is part of the overall conversation anyway.
And that's our next, that's our next item. And so I think in the discussion that we're having here is we, we really ought to understand that on, on 13, that we need to, we, we need to take this off the table. It's been tabled. We need to take it off the table and take away the discount for, for recycling. And, and that would be my suggestion from the get-go to, to do that tonight, so that, so that we can proceed. And then from there, I, I'm in agreement with everybody here. If, if we want to charge more for recycling, I'm, I'm, I think that's smart. I, I don't, I don't quite believe that the numbers, um, and there's other ways to investigate it, you know, that we don't have to throw the baby out with the bathwater. There's, you know, we can do something different, but, um, it is important that we, we maintain our budgets. We do have to, we do have a, have to have a budget that, that works and, um, and so where we can generate those dollars. And if, if people want to pay for recycling, um, that's a good idea. Any other statements? Councilman Bailey?
Um, Your Honor, I, I guess me looking at the proposed rates, I mean, they sort of have removed the discount because the recycling rate is now higher than, than the non-recycling rate, but it's only 40 cents difference, which to me, 40 cents times 600 people is not enough money to worry about.
Well, and the, the other problem, the, the other problem that we need to do is we need to, it's a housekeeping problem right now. We just got to clean that up. If, are we going to hold a discount or are we not, is what we need to decide. And I think we can do that tonight.
Yeah. And that's sort of what's proposed.
Yeah. And so, so as long as we keep that in this discussion, the, the next item on the agenda needs to be taken care of and, and taken off the table. So let's take it back to Councilman Schatz's suggestion. Are you willing to still put your motion forward?
If that, so Your Honor, Mia, just to be sure, so you're, you had spoke a minute ago, you said that we don't necessarily need to put the rate increase in the motion, just the motion to continue curbside recycling for a fee. Is that correct?
That would be sort of correct. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say for a specific fee because that would be an add-on to the billing. The proposed rate actually would propose that we charge a higher rate for curbside recycling and it's a specific fixed rate that's built into the rate schedule. So I, I wouldn't necessarily say for a fee as much as it would be to continue with the curbside recycling at this time. And then you could revisit the, or you can visit the fee issue with the next item on the agenda.
Okay. So Your Honor, I would amend my motion to continue curbside recycling in the city. And we can address the next item.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Without the fee. Is that correct?
With no fee?
Oh, I'm sorry, without the, uh, credit.
Okay. So let me, let me get that motion clarified. We have a motion on the table by Councilman Schatz that removes the.
Credit.
The credit from the recycling that is currently in place. And we have a, we have a.
I would say.
We have a motion from, from Councilwoman Schatz and we have a second from Corey. Corey, is that how you want that read?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So anybody have discussion on that?
Your Honor, as a point of order, can we get clarification on the motion? I have to continue the curbside program with removal of the credit. Is that correct?
That's, that's, I have three dots on my agenda. That's what we're replacing with.
Thank you.
So with that.
That is how I am.
With that said, to you guys on the phone, do you understand the motion?
I do.
Yes.
Okay. So let's call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Let's move on to item 13, consideration of resolution number 1402 sanitation rate adjustment. This item was tabled. The chair would entertain a motion to remove the consideration of resolution number 1402 from being tabled.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Larson and a second from, by, um, Councilwoman Schatz. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The chair would entertain a motion to approve resolution number 1402.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Larson and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion?
I guess, Your Honor. Regarding our previous conversation, um, this rate shows that the recycling rate on a 90 gallon container would be 40 cents higher than the regular rate. Um, so again, along the conversation that Rebecca had brought up in charging something for the recycling to help cover those additional costs, um, and, and I think that should be passed on to both sizes of container where the 45 gallon doesn't show any difference in price. Um, you know, and, and I don't, again, I, I don't want to punish the people that don't want to recycle by making them pay for it, but yet if we just put the extra cost of recycling on to the 600 people that recycle, that would be, I think it was $13. If you divide $100,000 by 600 people, it's $13, uh, which would make people not recycle, period, because I don't think they would pay that. I don't, that would be my guess.
Do we have anybody in the audience that would give testimony to what they would pay to have their recycles picked up? I have great wisdom in this man's opinion.
I'm Gary Hatley and I didn't come here for, talk about recycling, but it's interesting to listen to you. I don't recycle. It isn't worth $2 to me to go out and put my stuff on the curb and pick up my containers when the wind blows it away. It just isn't worth that. And, uh, I think if we buy a quality broom at Walmart or any other place that isn't from China, we won't be throwing that broom away after we use it twice. So that's what we live with, with the products we buy today. They're all pretty temporary and throwaway. So you could look at doing that, those kinds of things by American or by quality. But anyway, um, I'm unclear by your discussion as to what the actual cost would be. You mentioned $13 or $17. Is that for the year?
No, that's, that's additional per month. And, and if you really run the numbers correctly and give it some reduction in, in flow, it would be, it could get as high as $30. Okay. Added to your bill per month.
Well, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm, I'm really, I think it would be real important to get these numbers figured out so that we know. I'm, I'm in a, I disagree with the concept of charging everybody in Riverton a recycling fee, because you got 16% of the people that feel like they should recycle and 80% that don't, or they're neutral. So what you're doing is you're, you're putting this burden, cost burden on the people that aren't necessarily in agreement with it, however they, however they feel. So I'm, I'm against that concept, but I'm confused by the numbers. So I think if we understand exactly what I, as a homeowner, would have to pay, uh, this, I don't know where it's floating right now at this meeting. It seems confusing.
Well, yeah, it is. And, and let's try to clarify that. We'll put some amendments on this and try to put it in place.
Okay. Well, that's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Again, I, I wasn't planning to speak either. David Kellner, um, I guess from just a citizen's standpoint, I do recycle. The reason that I started, in addition to believing it's good for our environment, was the cost savings factor of it. So I think you are discounting a decent amount of the population that does recycle for that purpose. That being said, with all the conversation, um, I, I feel if you're jacking only the people's rates that are recycling, you're going to lose a vast majority of those people if they're paying the whole burden. From the discussions of a lot of people that were for it, it seems more of a societal issue as opposed to a dollar issue. So in, in my opinion, if it's a, a benefit that we're helping our society, our community, that it should be distributed through all of Riverton and more of an equal pay for that service. You can participate, you can't participate, that's up to you. Maybe again, enforcing the benefits of why it's beneficial for our society to be participating in this program could be helpful. But if, if you're strictly going to put the people that are using it and put the full burden on them, I think you're going to see a dramatic reduction in people that are using the service, my personal opinion.
Thanks, David. I appreciate the input. So here we are. We need to take a vote on resolution 1402. And what that does is it, um, it, it will pass our sanitation rates at where they're at. Mia?
Your Honor, pardon the interruption. I just wanted to remind the council and maybe give some more background information regarding where these utility rates came from. We- We had a work session, a council work session, back on November 5th, and we hired a professional consulting firm to examine all of our enterprise funds. And the analysis helped to determine all of our overall funding levels for our utilities, and determined that the amount of revenues that we're going to need to upkeep all of our system, including curbside recycling, operation, sanitation operations as a whole as well. He looked at the development and refurbishment and repair of our systems and equipment, maintenance, operation, and ongoing sustainability, and I just wanted to let the general public know, some of the things that he examined when he, he did this analysis was our financial data, including our historical itemized budgets, income and expense statements, balance sheets, operational costs, our borrowing and debt history, our long-term equipment repair and replacement schedules, our long-term capital improvement projects, the amount of volume that we needed and usage that we have within our systems, sorted by rates and classes and codes, our rates and fee tables, and then our system-wide meter inventory, which we have, that's for water, excuse me, we've moved on past that. But I think that it's important that as we're considering these rates, that he based our utility rates for all three of our enterprise funds based on all of this analysis, and so we want to be careful when we're trying to set rates arbitrarily. I want to make sure that we're, we're somewhat consistent with what his recommendations are, in order to get us down the road where we need to be in the future. So, just a final comment on that.
Thank you. That is important, and it is, it's also important that we get this passed, so that the billing system can get set up and, and be moving. We can come back and readdress what might be a fair fee to charge at a later date, and whether it goes across the entire city. But, you know, Mr. Hatley's comment, I think, is very well put. There are 80% that don't believe that they need to recycle, and so somehow, we're going to have to address that, and, and the cost savings, just generating more money doesn't, doesn't reduce government. Just a thought. Just because we can charge more money for what we do, doesn't necessarily make it the burden easier on our society, or on our, on our citizens.
Your Honor, if I could, I would just like to interject. As, as Rebecca stated earlier, she really wasn't aware of the recycling program, and I really think that a lot more people would participate if they were aware of it. So, maybe we need to do a little P R on that, and try to get some input from the citizens on how they feel, and if they would be willing to participate.
Sure.
So, maybe some sort of a survey or something.
And I think what I would suggest, is that we go ahead and approve this item number 13, so that the water and sanitation can move forward, and then we'll have to come back and see what kind of fee, if that's our choice, to put back on it.
Your Honor, sorry for the interruption. We've lost connection with Mr. Hancock, so I would respectfully ask if we could take a five-minute recess, so we could reconnect him.
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll stand adjourned for five minutes.
Do I need to hang up, or do you want me to hang out?
Hang out.
We're going to hang up on you, Cory.
Okay, thank you.
Won't be the first time, Cory.
It's okay. No, you're good.
I think that's what, what is reduced, or what is increased. They want to apply, the only way to guarantee is to apply it. If you try to apply it to a particular group based on, to a particular group based on behavior, then she does know.
Thank you, Lance.
I'm going to, we're going to, you want to know what we can do? Let's see what we can do. We can do that. I, I would- We can do that. Money, money, money. I was-
Right. That's right.
How are you, Jim? Excuse me. When, when are you? When are you?
Then we'll come back and revisit the sanitation costs and try to come to a reasonable idea of that. So, we're past discussion unless somebody else has something else to add? Corey or Tim?
No, nothing, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Public hearing to consider the ordinance number 19-014 on first reading, Riverton Municipal Code 17.22.170, flags. Community Development Director, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you this evening for your consideration is ordinance 19-014, amending chapter 17.22 of the Riverton Municipal Code. Ordinance 19-014 is the result of directions staff received from council subsequent to the denial of a request for a variance for an 80-foot flagpole proposed at 604 West Main Street. The current language contained in chapter 17.22 of the Riverton Municipal Code equates flags mounted on flagpoles to signs and as such requires them to comply with the same height maximums. In this case, it would have been 30 feet, which was the reason for the denied request for the variance by the Board of Adjustment and Council. After review of ordinances of surrounding communities, Sheridan, Rock Springs, Green River, Laramie, and Gillette, flagpoles are generally exempted from regulation within their sign regulations. In order to address the requested verbiage from council and provide modicum regional consistency, ordinance 19-014 is now being presented on first reading. The intent of ordinance 19-014 is to exempt flagpoles installed in various commercial zoning districts within the city of Riverton from commercial signage height restrictions and put in place provisions for what flags may be flown in the chosen flag, if the chosen flagpole exceeds signage height. With that, I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Kristin, this is where usually I jump over you. Would you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 19-014 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning to revise chapter 17.22 signs, section 17.22.170 flags of the Riverton Municipal Code and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I now declare a public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state law and other applicable laws, excuse me, state statute, state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing. Anybody give me a motion?
Some of them. Some of them, second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Schatz and a second by Councilman Bailey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would now entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 19-014 on first reading.
So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a, we have a motion from Councilwoman Schatz and a second from Councilwoman Borders. Further discussion? Councilman Bailey?
Yes, Your Honor. Again, I think on the regarding flagpoles that are above the, I think it's 25-foot height.
Thirty.
Or 30.
Thirty.
I think we should limit it to just flags of the United States and the state of Wyoming only. I think that would be the clearest and cleanest, and that's what we're basically trying to do. And I would move for that amendment.
Do we have a second?
I'm in second.
So, we'll take that. Is there any further discussion? You guys on the phone, are you understanding that amendment?
Not, Your Honor.
So, let's take a vote on that amendment. The amendment is to limit the flags that are in excess of the 30-foot current sign ordinance to be limited to the Wyoming state flag and the United States flag. Before we go a little bit further than this, staff, are we all right with that?
Absolutely, yes.
Yes, Your Honor.
That amendment will work, so we're going to call for a vote on that. The amendment, the amendment was proposed by Councilman Bailey and seconded by Councilman Is there any further discussion?
Your Honor, it's really difficult to be involved in discussions from this far away with the delay. For example, my video is about 15 seconds delay. I think my sound is about five seconds delayed.
Do you want us to speak slower?
You're doing fine. And also, I have to add the fact that my voice probably isn't very easy to hear. But I guess one of the things, and this is where maybe it's not a benefit to have somebody who's done a lot of constitutional law research and that sort of thing on the council, but I don't know, maybe it is a benefit. I don't know. But the reality is when we, when we, the whole reason I think behind the old ordinance, or the ordinance as it stands now, without this proposed change, is to say, we want to have what you would call something content neutral, which is, it doesn't matter what sign billboard flag is being displayed, we won't allow it over this height. I think you start to get into muddy waters, so to speak, if you start saying that we will allow certain things at this height, but not other things. And it really has to do with people trying to say there's a problem with it according to the Constitution. So, my concern, I think, with this limiting and saying this can only be allowed for certain flights is that the content of the speech, in other words, what you are putting up is going to be regulated. That's where there might be challenges to this, saying that it is a regulation that is impacting pre-speech and not just something that's content neutral. Now, if you feel comfortable with that as a council, fine, but I do have concerns about that. And that's my concern with the way this is written is now. The only way we could get past that, I think, would be to say, any flag. I don't really love the idea of any flag. I actually, when we started talking about this, really liked the idea of making an exception to the United States flag. I think that's, it's an exceptional flag. It's an exceptional thing. But it does concern me when we start regulating in that way, saying that it has to be only certain flags. We might be opening ourselves up to a lawsuit. That's my concern.
Councilman Larson.
Tim, then don't vote for it. But I feel that we keep on wondering and hoping that we're not going to be in a lawsuit because we offended somebody for being a American first. And if you want to put up a Japanese flag, be my guest, but it won't go over 30 feet. So, bring on your lawsuit. Thank you.
Staff shaking over there? Doesn't scare staff. So, Corey, you have anything to add?
I do not, Your Honor.
So, let's go to the vote. On the amendment, the amendment is to limit the flags that exceed the ordinance of 30 feet. Only be American flags or the state of Wyoming flag, which would make that so that the U.S. flag would be above the state of Wyoming flag. Right?
Correct.
So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? So, we have, we have an amendment on the motion. So, we go back to the motion. The motion is from Councilman Schatz and seconded by Councilwoman Borders is to allow the ordinance to go forward. Any further, any further discussion?
One, just one small detail. Is there any engineered design in here?
Yes. The flagpole is engineered.
End of discussion.
And, and with that said, I shouldn't jump in there and answer that. Eric, you want a shot?
Thank you, Your Honor. That is correct.
And, and there we are. We would, we wouldn't forego any engineering and see, the comments on this kind of stunned me because, like I said two weeks ago, when you drive down I-15, there's got to be 100 flags that are in, in excess of this.
Three in Evanston at the fireworks stands.
Yeah. And so, you know, I think we're just, we're just spending a lot of time on, on things that, and, and in, and in some, trying to make Mr. Howard feel better, you know, he thought of this idea and he wants to be patriotic with it. And I don't think it much matters, matters where it's at or, or what. And we're not saying we can't have another flag. We could put another flag out on Veterans Park. It's, it's the only, the only problem is finding dollars to do it. And that's, that's what we do here, is find dollars. So, I think it's a great opportunity to show, and, and just a little bit of background, when that flag at 80 feet has to come down to half mask, as at 40 feet, right? And the flag's 20 feet long, that drops it to being 30 feet off of the, off of the ground, and his building's at right, at 20 feet high. So, the flag isn't running on, on the top of his building. If we were to put a 50-foot flag or a 30-foot flag, which we have behind City Hall, we wouldn't see it from federal. We would need that big tall flagpole.
Correct.
Rock Springs has 160-foot flagpole. You know, this isn't an excessive thing. And so, yes, it is engineered. The planning department has done a wonderful job looking at it. It will have to be done right and correctly, and, and so, it would be my suggestion that we, that we pass this. So, the motion is, Councilman Schatz has, is to move this forward. It's been seconded. Is there any other further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution number 1403, Airport Landing Fee Adjustments. With the Public Works Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This proposed resolution adjusts our fees for commercial cargo and commercial passenger landing fees at the airport. This was last adjusted in 2006. At that time, the average landing fee was 84 cents. As you've seen your packet, the current landing fee average, when we throw out Jackson Hole, is a dollar two per thousand pounds. This was brought before the Airport Board in November. They unanimously voted to increase Riverton Regional's proposed landing fee from 85 cents per thousand pounds to a dollar five per thousand pounds. This keeps us in step with the other similar airports in our market, and I think it allows us to try to be as self-sustaining as possible at Riverton Regional. The only thing to note in addition to the increase is that we're proposing that this increase commences on February 1st. That allows for us to transition Denver Air Connection out and SkyWest in and also accommodate when they're both flying for that first week and a half in the month of January. So, it's cleaner for, I think, all parties involved to commence this January 1st. This will apply to all commercial passengers, excuse me, all commercial passenger aircraft and commercial cargo aircraft that land at Riverton Regional Airport. So, staff recommends that we support the Airport Board's decision to increase the landing fees from 85 cents to a dollar five. Thank you.
Thank you. With the city clerk, please read Resolution number 1403 by Ty Loney.
Yes, Your Honor. Resolution number 1403, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton to adjust the commercial landing fees for Riverton Regional Airport.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution number 1403.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Resolution 1403.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Bailey and a second by Councilwoman Borders. Any further discussion? I, at this point, would like to commend the airport, the FAST Committee and all the work they're doing. It's a great, it's a great job you're doing, and I commend you for the effort that you're putting in. So, thank you. With that said, no other discussion. Is there none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Industrial development bonds. City Administrators' report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Moving into the home stretch, we get to have a much different conversation about potential industrial development bonds. So, at the previous council meeting, we had a little bit of a discussion about this and asked council, is this something that we want to begin to talk about? And we presented this as a type of, as a tool for economic development. Now, we have discussed it in light of requests from the Riverton Medical District, so that is tied in here. However, what I'm going to present to you tonight and what I'm going to talk to you about isn't consideration of issuing bonds for the Riverton Medical District right now. What I'm, what I'm talking to you about is, one, how those bonds work a little bit. I'm going to use some 30,000-foot language because we're still working through the details and with bond counsel on how that would work. However, whether or not to move forward and if this is something we want to put in place as a policy, and what I mean by a policy is, in order to have these, you need to have standards. Ultimately, council will be the deciding factor. If, even if you put the standards in place, whether or not those standards are met is at the discretion of council. So, what we, what we find with industrial revenue bonds is, it's like many other bonding processes, as that the city issues bonds and those bonds are municipal bonds, they are tax-free, and then they can be sold, those bonds can be sold. But in this case, generally speaking, the debt is actually transferred with the bonds to a third, to a, to a holding bank, I believe is the verbiage that was used. And then, the repayment of those bonds is with regard to, in this case, we've talked about Riverton Medical District, the hospital, and how that gets repaid is through that, that revenue stream. If, the, the big question that we had is, if these are issued, if the city chooses to issue them, what, what is the, what is the negative impact that could arise? We know we can do it. At this point, other communities have done it. You've been provided the resolution, a copy resolution from Laramie County that we changed to include our name instead on, kind of to show how it would look. So, we know it can be done. But the negative impact of this, we did, what we understand right now is that the repayment, if whatever business, whatever, whatever industry is funded fails, what happens? Do we have to repay that? And the answer is no, we do not. However, the question comes, well, what is the negative effect to us? The negative effect that we have found is that if, in fact, that terrible, terrible scenario did in fact happen, and the worst-case scenario happened, that it had, it could have significant impact on future bonding capacity and, and future rates and the like, basically affecting your bonding rating, if you have that, or your ability to levy bonds at that, at a particular time or what those go for on the market. Okay, that is, that's reasonable. The challenge we have, even when speaking with bond counsel who've done these items before, is it's not predictable. It's not predictable what that impact will actually be. We know there would likely be an impact. That is true. So, there's a little bit of ambiguity there. The question be, you have, but they can't, I'm sorry, I'm back up. While there's some ambiguity about what the worst-case scenario could actually bring to us, it is, it is a tool. It's a tool that can, city can use like any other tool, a hammer or a screwdriver. They all have their means and they all have a reason to use them. As such, what we've provided for you is a copy of a resolution that we would like your permission or your direction to move forward with and fine-tune and present to you as a final document that would lay out the standards by which, or the, the items that would need to be provided to you in order for you to formally consider it. So, what I mean by that is, we would bring something back to you that is a little more fine-tuned. We're probably 95% of the way there with this. And then, whatever organization, whether it be RMD or any other that wished consideration, would then be required to meet those different things that you, that you've set forward. What does that mean? It means that when we actually adopt this, if and when we adopt this, we would have to make sure that what is contained within that resolution are the exact things we want to see, because that's what they're going to be required to provide. And as such, we would like to, we would like to move forward as staff with providing that as a formal, as a formal consideration, probably at the second meeting, regular meeting this month, so in two weeks. We believe we can have something for you at that point to consider. Now, what does that mean then for Riverton Medical District as it apply, as it applies to the process? What it means is then you would approve, if you approve that resolution, they would have the guidelines that they would have to provide to council for your formal consideration if you want to walk through that bonding process. That includes process, who's paying for things, the different documents that they have to provide to you. It would also lay out the exact same standards for anybody else who applied, and then you would have to consider it. The challenge with this process and what I've generally found is that no matter what we set forward for you, at the end of the day, I mean, they, much information, and we can set as many different general standards as we want, but at the end of the day, council will have to choose and determine whether or not that particular agency, whether, no matter who it is, is, is worthy of your consideration and what it brings. The purpose of these bonds is simply to, as you can see in the, some of the verbiage, let me make sure I use it, is that you have to do a demonstration of benefit. She'll consider issuing industrial development revenue bonds only upon a clear factual demonstration of direct economic benefit to the community. That's what it is. It's an economic development tool. Now, I've talked a lot about it, but generally speaking, I believe we're at a point where, while you're not formally considering the RMD request, you do, you are considering whether or not this is something that you feel comfortable with as much as we can. We know from the information we have that we would not necessarily be on the hook for repayment, but it could have negative effects if everything went south. We always talk about worst-case scenario because that's part of our conversation. With that being said, I would recommend that council direct staff to present a final resolution at the second meeting, second regular meeting this month on the 17th, and then we can have further discussion. And if you choose to pass it at that point, we would be able to continue working with whichever applicant. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Appreciate it. There are those in the audience that would like to possibly speak to us, since you waited long enough to get in line.
I got nominated earlier to speak. My name is Court McGuffey, Riverton resident. Thank you, Your Honor, councilmen and women, for allowing me to speak tonight. It's been a while since I've been to one of these meetings and I'm reminded that the wheels of government are slow turning. So, I appreciate your service to our city and know that you guys work hard for us, and I appreciate that. Appreciate Tony working with us on this project tonight and encourage the council to approve Tony's amendment, I guess, or recommendation. I was glad to hear that the mayor and Councilman Bailey are numbers guys, because I'm a numbers guy too. And as Tony stated earlier, these are, it's an economic development tool. And what has happened at our hospital, you know, we had 25 doctors and now we've got under 10. Every doctor has a $1.8 million economic impact to a community. That's almost $30 million a year. And so, I can't think of a better economic driver for a community than getting this new hospital done. So, it's very important to not only the city of Riverton, but everybody on the north side of the river here, communities around us to get this done. And this would, using this as a tool would greatly help us in figuring out a way to finance our project moving forward. So, we hope to get something to you in the next two weeks for your consideration, and that's all I have. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Court. So, the Chair would entertain a motion to ask staff to continue to discover, and before we go to that motion, I would, I would like to say one thing about what I know about bonds. We don't stand liable for their repayment, but it can hurt your bonding ability. We don't bond very often. He is over there saying, not very often. And so, what I say is, this would be a wonderful opportunity, just like we use ID Inc. to put another tool in our toolbox to be able to economically grow whatever opportunity comes our way, if it's a gun manufacturing plant or hospital or whatever. And so, we do, the downside is, is simply that if it fails, you could have your bonding rating lowered. So, we need a motion to, to direct staff to continue to prepare paperwork to, to educate us to receive that information.
So moved.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Borders has the motion. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Good. Matt.
Kyle Larson has a second. Further discussion? Is there any?
I guess, I, I think we need to investigate it and look into it further. I guess, we're not passing any judgment that we should or shouldn't do it at this time. So, I think we, we need to be fully aware of what we'd be getting into.
Option, Your Honor.
Yes.
And, and comments that I've received from, oh, man. I, I love going on Facebook and trolling people, throwing out comments and getting remarks. And a major concern was repayment. I do that. I love it. And the repayment of revenue bonds comes from the facility that is indebted on the revenue bonds. The reason for Riverton to issue those revenue bonds is it means that they're municipal and they're tax-exempt. The tax-exempt allows the investor not to pay federal income tax. That allows them also to have a lower interest rate. Now, if the question would be, how much we can issue? Would it be sufficient for the project size of the hospital? The next question after that is, during that period, we built this thing, it's all structural, and where does the operating monies come from? You know, you fill it with patients, but insurance pays slow, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have to bond sufficient to cover that part. And the next question is, is how long do you stretch out that payment? Is it a 10-year? Is it a 15-year? Or is it a 50-year? So, these questions we need to ask as tools, you know? Most tools are definite and finite. Tape measures are certain lengths, drills are certain lengths, nails are certain lengths. So, but a bond is a creation of a financial instrument. And so, we create it, and so, we need input from, from the hospital board or the hospital facility, length of construction, getting the 10 doctors or the 20 doctors, you know, and... And I'm not against it. This is the same thing as our airport. We are losing considerable amount of people to Casper, Salt Lake City, Lander, wherever that we could have. A good friend of mine was shipped to Casper for a stroke that she had, and that could have been alleviated in this hospital. That was nothing more than an injection by a person that knew what they were doing. So this is a wonderful idea that we need to explore that would help Riverton. Now, if the Manita Divide came in and there are a hundred wells drilled a year, this is a no-brainer. This is easy as falling off a pin. That would pay for it by the added people coming to town. So I'm, I'm, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Thank you, Kyle. Tony?
Your Honor, Councilman Larson, the good news about the questions you asked are those were actually part of the conversations that we had last week, specifically with regard to time period and amount. The numbers that we're working back and forth with that have to be shored up, of course, before we actually move down if we went that direction, would include some of the initial operating costs. You have to, you have to have that revenue, just as you pointed out. It is built into the conversations. When we've been talking about dollar amounts, the question brought up was whether or not you could bond sufficiently. Yes, yes, you can. That number didn't bother bond council when we spoke whatsoever. It wasn't brought up as, I don't know if you're bumping up against something. So we did not expect that to be an issue. Generally speaking, with bonds term, we've talked a lot about bonding because we talked with Douglas at one point. We heard about, I shouldn't say talked to them, we heard about Douglas's work on their hospital and they paid them off early. That's always desirable, but the question about how long you can take them, I can tell you, I don't remember ever issuing a bond past thirty years in any project. That's, I don't remember seeing any of those. I've heard twenties, fifteens, but we would probably want to short that up and it would be part of your consideration. But the good news is we do know that we have the capacity. The information we have now says we have the capacity if that was your desire, which means that you have the capacity to provide that in other industry as well. So thank you for the questions.
Hi, guys on the phones, do you have any questions?
I just wanted to clarify, I guess, what we have right now, that's just a proposed resolution. The intent from staff is to come back with something that's finalized, but your intention is it's going to look pretty similar to what we have there, is that right?
Your Honor, that is correct. We do appreciate any recommendations or any thoughts to any of the reading because it's, we know it's thick, but it's going to be, it's pretty well-developed.
This verbiage comes from Laramie.
It does, Laramie County.
Laramie County. So I think it's somewhat tested, and I don't know that we have to rewrite the rulebook, but we need to go in with our eyes open. And this isn't just for the Riverdale Hospital, it could be some other manufacturer that we need. And yet, the hospital needs it right now, and once again, we're right back at that split. There's those that don't think we need a hospital and those that think we do. And so our current hospital was purchased thirty days ago, twenty days ago, again, and now the operators are running those for their new owners. And so this, you know, we just need to understand this and we try, we need to get people on board that want to participate in this, and I think it's a real good thing for the city of Riverton. So I would encourage everybody to at least see where this bonding could go and what it could do for us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We're now down to reports and comments, council reports. Kyle, could you start us off, please?
Sure.
Wait just a second. Hey, guys on the phone, would you want to go first so you can maybe, if you want to drop off? Corey, would you go?
Yes, Your Honor. I don't have a whole bunch. I was able to sit down with the Eagles Hope with a couple of other members of the leadership Fremont County. Believe that's going to be our project for this year. They seem to have quite a few good things going. We sat down with the Community Engagement Committee last night. Right now, all hands on deck for the Winter Festival, which I'll let Rebecca touch on a little bit, but then it's this weekend. And we also had our Fremont County School District Recreation Board meeting yesterday, just looking at some amendments to some of the bylaws. That is really all that I have to report right now, sir.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate you calling in. It's not easy to do, is it? Tim?
My pleasure.
Tim, are you available?
Yes, I don't have anything to report, other than we are not buried under a lot of snow here in Germany. I've had some rain, but weather is cooperating. That's it.
What time is it there? Tim, what time?
Five-thirty in the morning.
Thank you for getting up. I appreciate that. Poor guy. Appreciate you sitting through. Carl?
Just a couple of things. I guess the first thing is the Festival of Trees coming up this weekend, Thursday night. It's family night from six to eight at the Fremont Center. I'm so excited. The trees are amazing as always. It's the Land of Oz theme, so everything's Wizard of Oz, and it's to benefit CES and their work programs, so it's awesome. I can't say enough about it. Family Night's a lot of fun. You can get in for ten dollars for the whole family. And then the gala is Friday night. I believe VIPs start coming in at five-thirty, and then we'll have dinner and a live auction. So anyone that wants to come for that can contact CES for ticket information. Let's see, I've been working with the Solutions Committee. We haven't met for a while. I think we meet next week. But in the meantime, we're trying to spearhead this rehabilitation project, trying to get a place where people can go for an inpatient treatment facility. So that's kind of progressing. And then my last thing is the Food Hub, the Airport Cafe, or the, what is it he calls it, local food exchange is just phenomenal. He's, Jack's working his tail off up there. And so I would encourage everybody to go up there, get their daily special. The food's great, service is great. I think right now they're open from six to two, Monday through Saturday, so.
Six in the morning till two in the afternoon?
Yes.
I've eaten there and it is exceptionally good.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't know the hours, so thank you.
Absolutely.
We would like to encourage people to go up there and use that service. So that really does flourish, so we do appreciate it. Anything else?
I believe that's it.
Thank you. Mike?
Again, I don't have a whole lot. We sort of had a couple of weeks off here, had a nice Thanksgiving, had to travel down to Green River to be with my daughter and the whole family, and so we had a nice time. And the roads were clear both ways on Thursday. Can't say that about Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Friday, but Thursday was great. I'd like to compliment the city of Riverton. They got out and we obviously had a nice little snowstorm, and, you know, they got out and got with it. And, you know, I think for the amount of snow we got, we're doing pretty good. So again, that's always a challenge, and I know the city staff puts in long, early hours and, you know, so I commend them on that.
That's all I have. Thank you. Rebecca?
Yes, Your Honor. With the Community Engagement Committee meeting last night, meeting we had prior to that, the mayor had tasked us with setting up some type of neighborhood watch or at least beginning the discussion. And so odd that evening when I went home, I was scrolling through Facebook and I saw a page called Take Our Streets Back Fremont County, ran by a gentleman that lives in Hudson, and his goal is just to start neighborhood watch programs within all of the counties, so Riverton, Hudson, Lander, Dubois. And so we invited him to our meeting and he told us about his plan, and he's already got with Casey, Ms. Bailey there, to have a test trial in her neighborhood and then go from there. So hopefully by this summer, we have neighborhood watches all over Riverton. So that was really neat. Holiday festival kickoff is this weekend with the downtown open houses from five to seven, and then the light-up parade starting at seven PM going west up Main Street to Jason's Park, which is right behind the depot, to our tree lighting ceremony like we had last year. So that should be a really great event. I know it's in conflict with the other event, so hopefully next year maybe we can coordinate that a little bit better because I know some of people want to go to both. And then something, Mayor, we all got an email from a citizen about moving the flag ordinance to just a regular scheduled meeting. So instead of turning the work session next week into a special council meeting, just keep it how it would normally be for any other type of three readings deal. I agree with her on that case. He's not going to be breaking ground anytime soon. The ground's already frozen, there's a lot of snow on the ground. So if everybody else would agree to that, I say just have the second reading, the third meeting of this month, final reading, the first meeting of January.
Did we drop off on the phone?
I'm here.
Are you there, Tim?
Yes, sir.
I think that's a great idea, and Grace asked if we could do that, and so we really don't have to push. I think we have consensus of what we're doing there, so she thinks it gives an appearance that we're trying to rush something through on the poor citizens of Riverton. So I would make one adapting to that. The first January meeting is usually, got a bunch of bookkeeping in it to just catch up, so could we maybe move it to, that would put us to the third reading in January?
I don't see why there'd be a problem there.
All right.
So Mayor, if I understand you correctly, just for clarification, we would move that item from December tenth to the seventeenth, and then again, the second meeting in January, which would be the twenty-first.
So we would have the second reading on the seventeenth?
Okay.
And that would proceed like normal, but then we would have a delay to clear to the third meeting in January for its final.
Which is the twenty-first.
Okay. Is there any issue with that?
Is that a problem?
I'll have to do some research.
We'll need to do some research, but we can move it to the seventeenth for sure.
And if it's not, we can stick it back in on the.
I believe we can move it to the seventeenth. That's when it would have normally been. We were only considering a special, the only reason we were considering a December tenth meeting, honestly, in general, because we didn't have any additional items, was for that.
We could have tore this agenda in half. It works. So whatever works, we're not trying to push it through where nobody, and she was trying to say that, you know, all the holidays and people being gone, there might be a lack of interest, so.
We know we can move it to the seventeenth, Your Honor.
Okay.
And we'll find out anything else from there.
If statute requires, we can put it on the first.
Good.
So the first meeting in January. Everybody in agreeance to that? Is that all right? Kyle?
Sounds good to me.
You okay? Thanks, Tim.
That's all I have.
What's that?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Kyle?
Met with, Corey, with the Fremont County School District Twenty-Five Recreation Board, and I just wanted to put out that there is money available effective January one for beautification of Riverton. An example of that was we paid for Wind River Heritage so they could sprinkle the lawns down there. But we do not build buildings or anything like that as beautification. We paid Riverton Rendezvous, nine thousand, CATS of twelve-hundred dollars, RREC. Are you listening, Rich?
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So there's money available. It's, you have to apply for it, and you have to, you know, and so this money came in late in December, and you have to buy it, itemize bills, et cetera, but there is money available, so.
You know.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Maybe the enhancement committee can take a look at that and use some of that money to, or kick in trash or anything that might benefit there. Thanks, Kyle, for getting us on top of that. We appreciate it. I had a busy week, and the flag ordinance, I think, is, well, excuse me, thank you, Tony. Good thing I have people around me.
Your.
Tony, you're up.
Your Honor, I only had a couple of items. One, the force committee, the force meeting is canceled for December, and we had an email go on that. Staff is still working on a number of items. That's not why it's canceled. It's just, that's going to continue again in January, but the December meeting is canceled at this point. We have, I would echo the comments about our amazing staff and the work they do on our snow removal. That's a tough job. It's late nights and they've done a great job, everybody involved, so very appreciative of the work they do. We had a, we have a training opportunity coming up. We had some representatives from CWC come, council had talked about training opportunities, trying to enhance the training of staff, and they actually have money available for college courses that our people can take. So they're going to do a lunch and learn here for our staff next week, if I got that right. Yes. No, this week. I'm wrong. This week. So our staff can come in over lunch, have lunch, and learn about all the different programs that are offered, and looking through the list of the programs that they have and the courses that they can take and get paid for, possibly. I mean, there are qualifications that they have to meet, but just a ton of different things from welding to computers, to, I mean, just a ton of different things that all of them apply to us. So that's really kind, that was really kind of a nice thing, and the reason I mention it is because this is something CWC had, and they found us and reached out to us. And it was, that partnership is really important, and I think as they develop their programs, we've heard a lot about them lately. They're doing a four-year degree. They're going to be offering a four-year degree hopefully in the very near future. That's a kind of a big deal for a community college, so we really appreciate that partnership with them. As we look forward to those training opportunities that we want, they're going to be a huge resource, and they've stepped up to help us on that one. So we're appreciative of that. And then, Your Honor, I think that's about all I have. We, oh, the, we have a new system, and I want to give Mia credit and all of her people credit for finding it. We had some conversation recently about how we alert with regard to late billing and the like. We would like to let everybody know that, you know, we all understand that sometimes we have challenges, or we forget something, or something gets lost in the mail, and we have ways to try to help that. When we have late notices that go out, there are options that people can have. You can have automatic billing. We do that. You can sign up for it with us, and we're happy to do so. We do call-outs. We do automated call-outs if things are late, and then we do custom, personal call-outs of anything that's left. And Mia and her team are just now implementing text as another item that's on there. We understand that sometimes things happen, and we want to make sure that people have the opportunity to be informed. So what I would ask is that when, you know, if you hear somebody mention it or somebody talk about that process, please remind them to come in and talk to us so we can help them as best we can. I mean, there's a lot of different ways that we can provide that good service that's being provided, and Mia and her team are doing a great job of that. So we just kind of wanted to give credit because that's something they found and another way to use the technology we have in order to get that moving forward. That's all, Your Honor.
Thanks, Tony. Thanks, Rebecca, for reining me in. I do want to, while we're on that subject, and you mentioned CWC, CWC. has a really busy schedule for basketball this week. There's a game tomorrow night at six, and games Friday night, two games Friday night and two games Saturday night. It'd be fun to have as many people there as we could get, so that is a high point. I'd like to thank Tony, I'd like to thank Mayor Highsmith of Shoshone publicly, and Mayor Powell of Casper. And not very often do you get mayors to pull as hard together as, as they do, and we got to drive for thirteen hours yesterday down to see the governor for thirty-seven minutes. And that was longer than we thought we'd get. It was a good conversation, and so we appreciate all the efforts that people are helping us to put forward there, and with, we're encouraged to, to see if the Manita Divide project can go forward and bring more employment to Riverton, Wyoming. I did have conversations about the flag. They were fairly limited. I only had three people, but one of those people called me back and we had a longer conversation. I think in, in just, we want flags. Everybody does. And we just got to quit worrying about how many times we're going to get sued over that. I'm appreciative of the work that's getting done on federal. I know it snowed hard, but the approaches are out of the ground and they're, they've got the plastic off, and I hope they get them poured before they leave. And so we're pushing for that, and that's about all we can say. The project, you know, this is, that's a lot of snow. Yeah. City crews have done a wonderful job of getting on top of that and staying in front of it and picking it up and keeping the equipment in, in place. And we got a few phone calls while we were on the road, and Kyle was back in town, and he managed to get everybody open, and, and surprising how, how, if we communicate lightly, what we can get done. I appreciate, I appreciate that effort. With the highway, we no, we no longer have meetings every Thursday at ten. And so if you got some, some questions on federal, please call me, call Kyle, call Tony, and let's get them in front of the contractors. We're, they're all, they're true in their very best to get, to get things done, but as you can see, the weather has caught us at that. I did attend F-Tag, and the, the same thing's happening with the county. The, the mayors in the county are doing a great job. There is the festival in Riverton on the sixth, the holiday festival, that I would encourage everybody to, to participate in if you can. And then Lander is having one the very next night on the seventh. So if you got time to go over to Lander and participate in their parade, tree lighting and shopping on Lander Main Street, that would be, that would be really enjoyable.
Are they doing the tree lighting as well? Tree lighting?
You know, the little park that's just off of second, first, Second Street to the, you come into town and there's second, you hit first street first.
That works.
I can pay attention. Second street's the next one, and it's across from the Loaf and Junk.
Yeah. Where that building burned down?
Yeah.
On the corner, yeah.
Great.
And Mayor Richardson has been on that committee for, I believe, thirteen years or something, and it's grown to twenty-seven floats.
That's great.
So it really is a nice arrangement. I also would like to thank Pat Lebron. He's been in communication with me, and, and he hasn't given me any great detail of what, what they have done, but I know that the investigation was done correctly and to the, to a effort of three months long, and we've caught, we've caused those things on ourselves because we just question everything that happens, and so that's why it takes so long. And so I appreciate his office and his willingness to work with us and, and help us understand what, what happened there. So I don't think that's an easy task, and, and I wish I could have had that conversation a little bit earlier when I had the audience here, but I'm glad that Mrs. Lee's here and we'll have that conversation in just a second. I don't think we have executive, do we?
No, Your Honor.
And with that said, unless there's an objection from anyone on the council, we stand adjourned at nine forty-eight.